Good evening and welcome to the Auburn Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 25th, now called for order at 7:00 PM. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access programming. Is anyone in the audience recording tonight's meeting, hearing? None, please rise for them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which demands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our Central One Federal Credit Union, Southwood Street.
I want to recall, trust me, send this back to applicant, here it does make where the new building is going, which is all like I care, the foundation. So I put it up on the screen, they are basically combining these two parcels, these three parcels, and these two parcels, and we've got one there. So this is an ATM here right now, and this is where the new building is going on this lot. It was kind of cleaning up the process.
Okay.
The setback is good. On the sideline here, it's a minimum of 10 feet, it looks like it's a little over 12 feet.
No concerns with it?
No.
Nick, any questions?
None.
Ron?
None.
John?
Motion?
Yep.
Motion to approve the A and R?
I'll make a motion approving A and R.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Slow down. Etidania, 11 Southwood Street Court.
Yeah.
And that's just swearing off the parcels, correct?
Yes, this one, currently this parcel A is part of Lot 2. Lot 1 is looking to file parcel A, so it has a bigger backyard. No concerns myself or with the building commissioner? Just a plan transfer. You checked the irregularity factor, it was fine.
Just going to add eight to one?
Yeah.
So no concerns?
No.
Make any?
None.
Nope.
Motion to approve the A and R?
I'll make a motion approving A and R.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
What was the condition of safety? I was wondering. That's simple. It's good to have a care in front of you. That's definitely. That would be kind of a bit of a...
I know.
So that's the demolition.
So that's the demolition.
Yeah.
What time is it for hearing?
We're having times, so we can take it if we need to. We have to schedule a time.
Well, maybe we should go with this one then first, and then, because that one's going to weigh a lot.
I'll just schedule 7:05 though. 7:07.
Thank you. Can I get, applicant CGT requesting a special permit and site plan approval is looking for continuance to the next hearing?
Yes.
Which is March 10th. Could I have a motion to continue that hearing until March 10th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Neil Setnick?
Yep.
705 applicant Auburn Water District demolition of existing water tank pursuant to a condition of the site plan approval of October 9, 2018. Construction of a water tank at property located at 201 Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 72, ours as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please introduce yourselves.
My name is Ken Smith, I'm the water superintendent for the Auburn Water District. This is John Gregory, he's the district's consulting engineer from Tater and Howard.
Okay, can I have a motion open the hearing, please?
Make a motion open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're back from last October, previous October?
October 18.
18, time flies. As part of that project, we came before the board for replacement of both tanks, and because we knew that it was going to happen, and one of the conditions of that approval for, the site plan approval for that, was to have another meeting with the residents prior to demolition of the second tank. The first tank has been demolished, and it's been replaced with a brand-new tank. So here we are, we're posturing to put the second tank out to bid for demolition and reconstruction with a new tank. So we just want to come before the board as required by that previous site plan approval.
Was there an MOU, or memorandum of understanding for the demolition of the tank? What were the requirements? Did you put out a request for bid, or?
They will go out to project bid, I'll turn it over to John.
We're planning on putting it out to bid this spring. With the district's plan to demolish the tank sometime later this summer, once they get past the high water demand time of the summer, maybe sometime in August, there'll be some preliminary work that the low bid contractor will be able to do, in addition to manufacturing of the new tank at their facility prior to it being delivered to the site. So just kind of laying out the timeframe, we haven't established a firm bid date yet for the project, but we are looking at this spring, hopefully early this spring, and again, demolition would occur around the middle of August timeframe, I think is what we're looking at at this point.
Have you firmed up the bid documents? And can you kind of talk a little bit about, I mean, we are here for the public, so they understand the process, and that the person who gets the bid will be required to follow to make sure that we don't have a similar situation with the lead paint that happened some time ago, that I know there was an awful lot of concern at the last meeting.
Well, it'll be a very similar process to what we did for the first tank. First tank, we went out to bid, had an apparent little bidder, awarded the contract, and then went in, demolished the tank, and built the new tank. This was all under contract documents that were procured by the district, and that were developed by Tater and Howard under a professional engineer's stamp. Same process will happen. The only slight difference with this project is that the second tank, the replacement of the 2 million gallon tank, is under Mass DEP drinking water SNF loan funding, and so there are certain contingencies, certain language in the specifications that we need in order to fulfill the requirements of that loan, and they will have partial oversight during the project as well. We'll have to be working with them directly.
Is there still lead paint concerns with this tank? I know when they sandblasted before, clearly it didn't get all of the lead paint off, correct?
That was on the tank that's already been demolished.
That one is already demolished. What about this one?
This tank was built in 1967. In tanks of that era, they did use primers and paints that did contain lead, and in 19...
Anything up to 78?
Yeah, 78. And then, it was subsequently just color-coated, outside-coated. It's never been really de-leaded. This tank has been that way, the coating stayed on. In the 90s, we applied just a new color coat to freshen it up on the outside. There was no removal of any paint at that time, so.
So it was simply encapsulated with a new coat of paint?
Essentially, yeah. It's a moisture-coated urethane, that's currently on the exterior, but the coatings of the original, I guess we'll say the original construction of the tanker underneath that.
Mr. Burke?
So by what process will you demolish it? You're not going to sandblast all of it, or encapsulate it and then do it, you're going to?
No, what we're looking at doing right now is the roof itself, they will have to remove the coating around about a six, we'll say about a six-inch wide strip, so that it can be torch-cut, and the roof can be dropped into the middle of the tank. That'll leave the shell in place. That shell is prior to shearing or cutting of the tank, to demolish it, similar to what we did with the other tank, where slated to provide a, what they call a lead paint encapsulant over the top of it, which is basically an elastomeric or somewhat flexible coating that will go over the top of that shell. That way, when it's sheared, any of the potential paint that was delaminated, or chipping, or whatever, will be contained.
So you're not going to torch-cut the shell?
We do not plan on torch-cutting the shell.
Cover it over, cover it over?
Yes.
And then shear it?
Previously, that's how the first tank was demolished, by shearing, and he had it down in a few hours. He sheared, and he just cut it up into little pieces and folded it up, and put it in the back of trailer trucks, and it was gone. And that project also had the contractor set up to provide to the consultant a demolition plan, with this air monitoring, ground covers, monitoring, all those requirements have to be in place. So on this tank here, due to the lead, we are proposing to use this encapsulant over the tank, that will bond everything together to the existing coating.
So there'll be nothing going, floating out in the air?
The place where they're going to cut with a torch, the lead paint will be removed down to the steel with a vacuum system, they'll suck everything in, it's a contained unit, they'll just go around where they need to cut with a torch.
Which is just on the roof.
Yeah, just on the roof, to drop the roof within the tank. The shell will act as its own containment.
And is the ground around the tank going to be protected, tapped, and all of that?
Before demolition and after demolition, they have to do soil samples, pre and post, and they laid down ground covers before, they put down like a rubber sheet, and then they put steel plates on top of that.
So you'll test, then cover it, and then test afterwards when it comes to remove the project's done?
And the new tank will be much smaller, it'll be the size of the one that's in front. This tank right now is 2 million gallons, the new tank will be about a million gallon, the same as the new one that's in front.
To give you a perspective, the existing 2 million gallon tank is about 83 feet in diameter, this new tank will be roughly 50, 60. We will also have a third-party observer on-site every hour throughout the duration that the tank demolition contractor is on-site, someone who will be had with the demolition of the first tank.
Okay. Nick, did you have any questions?
No.
Because you can't take air samples ahead of time, because it's going to probably show nothing, because you're not doing anything, so. If you're doing the monitoring while it's going on and have...
We have four locations, and then the labor that's working there, it's all mostly mechanical with a large excavator, he wears a, the labor that's on-site, who's as close to the action as anybody, he wears one, and unfortunately, the air testing for lead is not a real-time. They send them, at the end of the day, they send them FedEx to a lab, and it takes two or three days to get the results back. There's still no immediate real-time analysis.
Is there a way to tent the entire tank while it's coming down? While they're working on it?
It would be almost impossible, because they got to get in there and cut it and reduce it into small pieces. It's a pretty big structure right now. But the only thing is that...
Doesn't make me feel very good that it's two or three days before you find out if the lead's floating around in the air?
Let me ask you a question. Stripping system, it's air and water? And use a garnet?
Not water.
Use any water?
To heat the back. It strips it to heat the back, pulls it out. It's a mechanical...
Is this stripping?
Yes, it's all one unit.
Right, so it's a piece that goes, like suction cup that goes on, you've got the suction, the bead blast comes in or whatever, you use it, it gets sucked right out.
Into a...
Yeah. So and then you're using the big excavator with shears on it?
Yeah.
So it's not going to produce any lead paint?
Especially, the purpose of that encapsulant is to contain any of those areas that have been compromised over the years, and we did have a third-party inspection done on this, on the tank, and for the most part, the coatings are still in pretty good condition. They could last a little bit longer, there are, I think, we estimated less than 1% of the coatings are starting to see any sort of real delamination or anything to that extent, and most of that is that old urethane that was done, geez, I guess we could say 30 years ago, at this point, 20 years ago at this point, so.
So Ken, have you done recently, prior to doing any of this now, have you done any lead samples at all, even like right now, or recently?
The, we've done, on the first tank, we did pre and post on that site there, and of course, after the demolition, and they were all within acceptable limits. Tolerances are there. Now, they've done the site work and disturbed some areas around that first tank, now we're moving further away into the woods for the second tank. This, that will be done just before the demolition, so we have realistic, good, valid, accurate numbers. Before they disturb anything, we go up there and do soil samples.
To get the base?
Yeah, baseline, yeah.
John, anything else?
No, I'm outside.
Open up to the public? Sir, could you please stand up and state your name?
Jim Philman. My concern on the older, 67, I assume, is the older tank, the one in the back. On that tank, it goes underground some, it's not sitting on top of there.
It is, it is. None of the tanks, just the foundations underground. The floor of the tank is at grade, I know it looks, it's a bit deceiving, there is roughly a, I think, was it a five to six-foot elevation change right there, but yes, that finished floor of that tank is essentially ground level, it's not very, just a foundation.
There's nothing underground, just concrete, so.
Anyone else?
I had a couple of questions about...
Did you please state your name and address, please?
I'm Liz Grubbins, I live at 77 Sunnyside Road. John, you talked about cutting it, and how nothing would be airborne.
Correct.
But how is that? If you're cutting it, you're basically taking some of that top coating off, really you are, because you're now exposing the...
Get it looking this way, it's like taking a pair of scissors to a piece of paper. Do you see anything flying around from the piece of paper? No.
And to try to avoid that, that's why I'm...
I would suggest that it's probably a little different than this paper, but...
Well, we're proposing to put on there, that the purpose of that is to...
Better example, excuse me, take a piece of laminated paper, cut it with a pair of scissors, do you see any flying around in the air? No.
So what you're saying is, is that coating that they pour in, it acts like a lamination on paper, and it's not going to allow any of that?
Are you talking about during the shearing process?
Yes, yeah.
Or the one where they cut the top?
When they're shearing it, because now you're cutting, it seems like that layer is now kind of exposed, right? Because of where you cut it.
No, it's encapsulated, yes. The whole, they're essentially repainting the tank with an encapsulant to hold everything in place. So even if the machine bumps up against it, you're not going to get stuff flying everywhere. Then they just take a giant pair of scissors to cut metal, and they're going to cut it up into little pieces and put it in a truck like the last one, you're done. Nothing goes fine in the air. And the system they're using the bead blast with, I've used it on bigger projects than that, there is no dust.
And even that process of putting it into the truck is not a...
They have ground cover, and every day, the labor is there with a vacuum cleaner, if he sees a paint chip, he vacuums it up as it's doing it, and at the end of the day, he takes all the paint chips, and they go in a barrel, and they get sealed, and they get sent off to, for proper disposal.
And if you could indulge me a little bit longer?
Sure.
So what happens if two to three days, the test comes back, and it's not acceptable? Then what happens?
I can't, you know, the work would stop immediately, since we knew that, and it is just, it's, no other way of testing, there's nothing real-time made today, every de-letting, every bridge painting project is exactly the same. If there's anything visible, the third-party independent?
Yes.
If there was any visualized thing, you would shut them down right then, but...
We're also monitoring ambient conditions as well, if there's high winds or something to that extent.
But you're saying after the project is over, it's done, now you're testing the ground again, and so my question is, what do you do then if it comes back and it's not within...
If he exceeds, if he exceeds the pre-construction limits?
Yeah.
He would have to remediate what he did. Yeah, that's...
So all of the soil around the tank would have to be remediated?
Right, which means it would be removed.
Yeah.
And how, I guess that my concern is, there's houses right there, does that...
Lead doesn't travel in soil, it's a very, it stays put.
Okay.
It doesn't run, it isn't leaching, it stays right there.
Okay. And then lastly, on the first tank, when you did the tests before and after, were, I'm assuming, that the tests after were not any higher than they were when you tested when you did it before? Okay, thank you.
It's really worth the contract as well to protect the soil.
Oh, I'm sure.
Very expensive.
You don't want to make a big...
All the way, it's very expensive.
Yes?
Here, Johnson, 101 Prospect Street. When you did the first tank, I was here, and we had asked for some, we were told that we would get some lead paint chips from the tower, it was stated 1 hour 55 minutes into that last meeting. I had emailed you and asked for these with an answer from Ken, that it was under his, that he felt that this was more for that back tank. It says, "It is our understanding that the additional testing of paint chips was more related to the rear larger tank for underlying primer and paint layers." Where it was constructed in the late 60s, as indicated in the attached site plan approval issued by the planning board, that they're going to do the lead paint testing for that back tank. But what I'm hearing from you guys is that that's not going to be done, because now you're saying that was for the first tank. I also asked for the results of that testing, lead testing, I did not get them, but I got the results for the air quality testing, which was fine, and the air quality testing was only done August 27th, 28th, and 29th, so three days of air quality testing, the 30th through the 3rd, it said there was no air monitoring. I feel like we're getting a little bit of different information from the last meeting, and I would like to see further lead testing done before we start shearing that top off, as then in the planning work.
I think the confusion comes in, they've already done the testing, that's why they know the tank has lead paint, and that's why they're encapsulating it, so it doesn't fly everywhere. That's where the confusion comes in. The testing's already been done on that tank, if I'm not mistaken, Ken?
Yes, yes, and it just, lead is lead, and the presence of lead, of, there's limits of it, it's there, you treat it the same, no matter what the lead is. It isn't lead-free, if it was lead-free, we would go down another path, there is lead there, and we're doing that accordingly. Just going on my memory, the only time we did active air testing was when this tank was being demolished. Once the tank was done, and folded up and shipped off, that was when they ceased doing air monitoring. There was no need to monitor after.
So it was done during those three days that she just noted?
I would have to check my record, but I've got...
Pretty sure that...
It went down pretty quick, and once they cut it up, went in the trucks, and then it was gone from the site.
Yeah, there was some debris still there, because we, you know, we walked, we stood by the house and we walked over, and there was some days that you guys didn't have to spray the dust when it was going to the trucks, which was after the 30th, I believe.
That was probably just the concrete base, it wasn't, there was no lead in the concrete.
Okay.
It was just the concrete, that was a precaution they were doing, and they weren't making much dust at all, so they were crushing up a little bit of concrete that was there, and that went into trucks also, there was not lead work, the steel was all gone by then, so.
Okay, so how are we going to ensure that when this comes down, that we're going to do, you know, that the dust is going to be contained at least?
Well, as they said, there's going to be a third-party observer, but also the building inspector and the board of health. With the demolition permit, there'll be some monitoring with them as well. Anything else you wanted to add to that, Adam? I know that you...
I believe, honestly, you need to need a demolition permit from the building commissioner, and the board of health is the authority for air quality. If there's any concern, they can coordinate any monitoring work with DEP if necessary. Sure, kind of let us know when they'll start their demolition, and make sure the overall price of the situation.
Ken, didn't you say there was an agency that was supplying some funding that was
also going to monitor?
DEP. Well, this is, what John referenced, this is the Mass DEP state revolving fund. It's not a grant, it's a low-interest loan. Plans and specs have been submitted to them, as well as the local DEP, and they perused and came back with comments and about the whole project and everything else. It's just a loan. I wish it was a grant, but...
They come out and inspect.
Yeah.
They do, like, once a month.
They have very stringent requirements for everything.
There'll be a scheduled progress meetings that we have to have with them, and this isn't a long-duration project, but those will likely be at a minimum once a month, and that'll involve a site visit as well.
And are these documents all publicly available for whoever would like to see them?
The bid documents?
Bid documents.
When they go out to bid, yeah, there's, they're probably, what, 90% now, John?
Yeah.
They have, they have public documents once they go out to bid, yes.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience have anything they'd like to ask?
Joyce Christensen, Iowa, 109 Prospect Street, right next to the tanks. I too reviewed last year's... I too reviewed last year's meeting, and before I ask a couple of questions, I'd just like to clear up something. Mr. Reagan, I think I remember.
That would be Reagan, not Reagan.
Reagan, I'm sorry. I think I remember you talking about if our coatings were applied, that that wasn't a good thing.
I don't think I ever said that.
That's what I mean.
I don't think I ever said that. That's my recollection.
There was something about a, a chemical that you were concerned about?
The only chemical they would possibly use on those tanks is if they were mediated with chemical, where they have to cut it with a torch and they put this adhesive cloth or paper on it and it comes off and it stays contained. That's the only chemical they would ever use up there.
Okay.
They don't use that, they're using a, a really nice sandblasting system.
Self-contained?
Yep, self-contained.
Forget, just for the roof proportion.
Just enough to cut that free.
On some, on some of these tanks, do they have like, besides, trying to think of it, asbestos mixed in with the lead paint? No. No, it's just steel, primer, and color coats.
No liner in the tanks, right?
No, it's just bare steel inside and a concrete floor. Or this one, whatever, steel floor in it also.
So regarding the third-party observer, which I appreciate the presence of, who would that be? What would their qualifications be?
We.
An industrial hygienist or?
We have a, it's a, the company's name is Suez that we used in the previous job and we're at this point slated to use them again. And they have certified tank inspectors that have many, many years of experience dealing not only with tank demo, but also construction, rehabilitation, et cetera. So one of their, we'll call it inspectors, would be on site, for the duration of it.
So all day, every day?
Yep, whenever there's demolition of the, this guilty. And on this last tank, we were fortunate to have Dave Merrithew there. And Dave Merrithew has probably forty years. His father had a business, he inherited the business, and Dave is well-versed in, in this business. He's not a rookie.
Yeah.
And he's very conservative.
We can't guarantee that he would be there again, again, it's based on scheduling and at the time, but he would, it would be kind of his oversight through his office. And Tate Ed Howard has worked with Suez, who was previously utility service, we were acquired by them, prior to that, from Merrithew Incorporated. We've worked with them since we came into business in nineteen ninety-two. Very well trusted.
Good. You mentioned tarps on the ground. During the demolition of the first water tank, you put like tarps along the fence?
That was.
You'd be doing that again as well?
Well, we, that fence is now gone. That fence that ran across the front is gone. They have the temporary fence around the site.
Right.
That was just a little additional measure, I, different thing, but we're blocking our view, I heard from some people, and they, and this woman was, and her grandchildren wanted to see the progress, so. No, they put that up, well, the contractor put that up in his own, is just an additional level. Now this tank is another a hundred feet back.
Right.
And, and the new tank is in front of it. So it's contained, our property goes way far back, and your property is to the side there. And the feelings we got so far is that they will just work, the excavator work within the tank, just try to stay within the existing tank footprint on, on this demolition, so. When they did put the tops down, they had big rubber sheets, and they did put steel plates to run the equipment over so it wouldn't tear up the rubber sheets. And that's what he was vacuuming any paint chips off of.
Like Ken alluded to earlier, there will be a demolition plan that the contractors require to submit, which Ken and I will review, make sure it meets specifications. We'll probably have our third-party also take a look at it prior to before anything.
And the approved bid will also become public, public information?
Any of this is public, yeah, public bidding.
Doreen?
Thank you. Doreen.
I'm just showing this to them.
Twenty-one Hill Street. So clearly we have a room full of concerned residents here. You know, I wa, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but we ask these questions because we're laypeople who don't understand this operation. And so I want to follow up on Mrs. Grubbins' questions. You know, you put a clear coat, you put a coating on a, on a building and it protects the outside. I think what we're struggling to understand is, once you cut that, you do have an exposed area that could have paint. I mean, we're, we're laypeople, but it's not making sense. Can someone explain how you're taking something that you're cutting, which is now exposed because it hasn't been sealed with that paint? How, how that is not exposed to the air or the residents?
The encapsulation is like, would be synonymous of urethane a piece of furniture. It just protects it, and this product that we're proposing to use here could be left permanently. If you had a tank that you wanted just to encapsulate it permanently and leave the tank there, you could do that. This is not a temporary thing. We're using a permanent product and it just holds everything together like a urethane would. And as John said, when you cut it with a pair of scissors, you just have that cut line, these shears, if anybody watched them do it, he just cut it with a, just cut up a giant pair of scissors.
If I may.
One minute, please.
Ken, I think what Doreen might be concerned with is when you do the shear process, does any of that encapsulation crumble or break away?
Diaminate?
And then does the lead that's near it?
Fall into pieces?
Break off or anything like that? I know it's a shortcut, but.
It, it's a cut, I would, the bonding, it's, it's, it sticks to whatever is there, and if there's any paint chips that become dislodged, that's what the ground cover is there for, and the labor is there with the vacuum to pick up any, any pieces. It's inspected at the end of each day. He vacuums them up with a hipper vac in a barrel that's contained.
So it'd be a fair statement to say that there is an opportunity for paint chips to fall away when, when it's being cut with these shears?
At ground level.
That'd be a fair statement.
Some miniscule, I don't want to say it's going to be.
They guarantee it.
I guarantee it. There will be none, that would not be a fair statement. There will be some small, but they'll, they'll be immediately picked up off the ground cover and not left there.
Doreen?
Thank you. So, so back to the tank and the cutting of it. So I'm assuming it's not the width of a piece of paper. So I'm going to go back to your example and use a piece of furniture. So I have a piece of furniture that's, has lead paint, but I put a urethane on top of it to protect it so that lead paint doesn't, isn't exposed. But now I need to get rid of that furniture because we're moving and we get, have a dumpster and we need to cut it in half. I mean, tell me if I'm oversimplifying this. I cut it in half, so now I have the exposed wood tank that has coating, lead paint structure. Am I wrong?
No, I guess you'd be, it's fair, but it's.
You're not wrong, but your cutting system is entirely different than what they're doing.
And that's just what we need reassurance for, because when you're cutting a tank, it is cut.
You'd be taking a saw.
But you're still cutting it. You're still exposing a portion of the tank that is not sealed.
But it's, it's different if you take a, like a power saw to it or a grinder that sends sparks, it sends dust in the air.
It's like cutting.
Doesn't do that.
What, what comes off of that is.
It's got to be. How did the first tank go?
It's, if I may, it's not, it's not, and I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone, but having spoken to several people, it's not the concern of the actual cutting, and if I'm, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me, it's not the actual cutting, now you need to remove this stuff, you're throwing it into a truck, it needs to be removed. Residents are concerned with that whole process about these pieces now that you've just shared and, you know, assuming that that's safe, you've shared it. Residents are concerned that now you're moving these pieces that you've cut into pieces to take away in these trucks, and, and we're still not clear on the third-party monitor, who they're working for and, and what they're monitoring. And residents have legitimate concerns here. They need some kind of reassurance that once you cut this, from the point it's cut and the building is demolished till the time it's brought off-site, because now they're waiting three days to get test, testing, they need some reassurance that what has just been cut up has not exposed the neighborhood.
Wasn't the first tank de-leaded? Wasn't that when this all happened? So that one was already de-leaded, that's where they started, and that's when this whole thing happened and all that dust came over, correct?
Right.
So when we, at that last meeting, we were assured that almost all the lead on that was gone. So yes, you're right, the first one did go well. I was very, it was great. There was no issues with the people, it was wonderful. But it was also already de-leaded because that was what was on Mrs. Violet's house, right? So now we're ahead. So you never de-leaded the back tank paint, you just cut the back tank, you covered it. So now we're going to expose that lead painted. Am I wrong?
The process will be the same, so what would, and I appreciate your concern, the process of cutting it into, they're not going to be pieces, the process is to take pieces that are probably ten foot, folds them up and he lowers them into the, the truck, so there isn't a, a bunch of little pieces. He minimizes how much he has to cut, because the more he cuts, the cost is him, so.
On trucks.
He, he folds them into like a, basically, I was amazed at the taco, like a taco, picks them up and lowers them in, into the truck, gently puts them in there, he didn't drop them in there. And so if the, the product, and it's going for proper disposal, if it, and that's the purpose of the ground cover, to contain anything that falls to the ground and we're worried, we, the third-party monitors the air, if it's too windy, he has, he watches the breezes, if it's too windy, we'd shut them down. And so, but it's, it's not, I, I can't, if you watched them, there was.
I know, I watched, I have some videos.
Yeah.
No, I, I was.
It's true.
Thank you.
And I agree, it was incredible the way it was done, but as that big thing that cut them up, dropped the pieces, dust did fly. I was assuming it was ground dust or whatever, because we weren't worried about the lead on that tank. And that dust flies, I have a bigger concern. And we are west of the tanks, which is why our yard did hit so hard the other time. At what point, if the wind is a certain, blowing at a certain speed, are you going to shut it down or wait or does more rain?
Take all that stuff right off those tops and down it goes, Prospect Street?
And that brings up a question when a neighbor who couldn't make it had. She was concerned about the hay bales that you have alongside, the hay and fills, that it's really not doing the job.
Is the runoff coming out the side?
Yeah, for sure. And a lot of it's coming out the gate, but it is heading right down Prospect Street, right into the swamp.
I've been up to, a week or so, I go up there quite often, you see my car there.
Yeah.
And we, we watch it and it's, it's pretty stabilized, that truck entrance there, we did not have the greatest season of.
Right, you had a wet season.
A wet season, and, and we were monitoring that to come out. And some of it comes out with just the vehicle tires, but we've had them sweep it, they went out and swept it several times.
But I've watched it pour down.
Yeah, we should call me, Sarah Six, I'm out there. I try to go up there as, as often, almost daily, a lot of times I'm up there several times a day.
Okay.
And we would let them know, we'll have them refresh the, it's, it's not forgotten, we'll have them refresh the hay bales and, and take a look at that, especially in periods of inactivity up there. It's hard to put the hay bales across the entrance.
Right.
And still get vehicles in there. They'll demolish them, so.
But the hay bales aren't meant to stop the water, they're meant to purify the water.
Right, they filter out.
Correct, takes out all the soil out of it.
Well, we have, we have a tile scrubber there, it's quite lengthy, so.
Yes, Liz?
So, I mean, it has to come down. So if, I, I can't imagine that there have not been other towns who have had the same situation, when they had to take the water tower down that had lead paint on it. Would you agree? So it would be very unique.
Oh, no, they're not unique at all.
So, so have, have you heard of any towns that have had really bad contamination or, or, you know, contamination that wasn't acceptable levels? And what did they do?
I can't really speak to any personal experience where we've had any major issues. We take all precautions we possibly can to contain this, have third-party onsite observation throughout the duration of the work. If there's any sort of situation, whether it be ambient conditions, weather, anything that could possibly compromise what's going on, I know.
That third party.
If the engineer, they then can turn them down, we'll be talking to Ken immediately and the work will be discontinued until the weather clears up, whatever issue at hand is handled, and we're comfortable with that work proceeding.
So you will be monitoring the weather prior? You're not going to stop it when there's a storm that's coming or, okay?
We know there's a nor'easter coming. We can plan ahead.
And I will be up there for the full, till the steel leaves the site. I was up there for the first one, for the whole process.
So what happens if something like that does happen? What do you do to the neighbors around it? What, what would they have to, what would have to happen with them? If you had to stop?
Well, we stop the work, they just, you know, if it's a weather-related thing, you stop till the weather passes. If he's doing something wrong, we shut him down. You know, it's, the, the tank has to come down. And the longer one belabores it, it's not in the best, the thing is to, is to get it down in a very safe manner, get it down, get it trucked away, and then it, then it's gone. If it stays there, you know, it's still a source. We're, we're treating this like anybody else would. We had an option of rehabbing that tank, of removing all the paint and everything else, and we didn't want to do that to, do, do obvious reasons. So now we're picking up the additional expense of demolishing that tank and making it go away forever.
Nick?
Yeah, and I don't want to insult you guys' expertise in this area, but would it make sense to hear from that third-party onsite observation folks? It seems like with their experience, they're, you know, forty years in observing these demolitions, that sort of thing, it would benefit the residents, myself, and maybe folks as well. Because some of these questions seem really, really involved, and honestly, you know, I think it's some, it's outside of my, my scope for one. But I think that it just, it would probably benefit and make you feel a little more comfortable with them.
And what's the feasibility of tenting the entire site while, while the work is going on?
You can't tent it.
You can't tent it.
There's just no room to work to.
You can't get a machine in.
Yes. You have to keep in mind that there has to be a large machine that's demolishing this tank, there also has to be access for trucks to be able to get in, haul this material off-site. I mean, you'd have a.
The, the structure is fifty feet high and bigger than most houses.
That too, Ron, good point.
My only question is the, whoever gets the job, the contractor gets the job, when he submits his demolition plan, does that have to be stamped by a licensed MASP or an
I believe we have that requirement. I will double-check that in our specs though, but that should be something that we can make a requirement, yeah.
And is there an LSP?
I really did for.
Cessella?
Yeah.
Is there an LSP on your staff to?
We have a subconsultant that's an LSP.
Either one.
If we had to bring them in, we would, it's not something we would normally do, but we do have access to that if it was.
And John, can you explain what LSP and?
A licensed site professional. They're very into any kind of contaminants, ground contaminants, air contaminants. I mean, there's a company I'm working with right now out in Springfield, they're the ones that do the work, and they're unbelievably stringent on what they have to do, I mean.
Right, and then most of the time, they're, they're after the fact.
We were digging ground that was contaminated and we, there was a kid there all day long with an air monitor. That was real time, because it wasn't what we were looking for, but all day long. And then soil samples are taken, they're sent out, much like it's going to be done here, they're going to take soil samples, send them out, get all your levels, probably not, probably not going to just test for lead, they're going to test for a whole range They're going to test for a whole range of things. It'll show up on that. And that'll be, if that's within the allowable, then when they cover it, they have to meet that. They can't exceed that at all. Or they got to come in and remediate the whole site. And it's very expensive.
And I think we have to have a certain amount of understanding that we've learned lessons, what we've done badly in the past.
And that's why we're not seeing...
And the, you know, the threat that lead poses. And that it's treated accordingly.
Their concerns are not unfounded.
Yeah, not at all. Not at all. Absolutely. So going forward, would it be, you think it would be beneficial, some of, yes?
Can you fill us out the status of the front tank that you guys finished? Is it online?
Could you please tell us your name?
Nancy Lucera.
And your address.
215 Prospect Street.
Thank you. And what's your question?
Is the, what's the status on the first tank? Is it online now? Is it up, running?
Yes, it is. It is inserted.
Has to be.
Right now, just to clean up the site, we're just waiting for, I know, the weather over the last couple of days, this isn't all that conducive, but we're waiting for the spring to do any sort of cleanup. Also, we'll be moving, planning to move straight into the next tank as well. So it's basically going to be secure in the site, then you're going to do the next tank and then do a final cleanup of the whole site.
We weren't quite sure when the second tank would occur after we came with the, it could have been three to five years. This SRF funding came in and we were successful in getting that. And that accelerated the tank replacement. So instead of going in and fixing everything right the way it was, and then a week later go back in and tear it all up again to build the second tank, we're in a kind of transitional phase here that we're going to move from one tank to the other one.
It was financing that made this two different contracts?
Yes. Yeah. Because we weren't sure when we could afford it ourselves and it started borrowing money.
What's it cost for a tank like that?
We're just talking about that, where we have to, went for.
Yeah, I mean, we're just talking demolition, the new tank, site work, and all that. Somewhere in the range of probably 1.6 to 1.8 million.
So it's a significant investment.
Yeah.
What's the new tank going to be made of?
Same as the copper glass fuses steel.
It's bolt together. It's like porcelain-coated steel, inside and out. So it'll never have to be painted. That's the beauty of the new tanks.
Good news. Did you have something else with Vile?
Yeah. I appreciate that you're going to take soil samples. Is it possible to extend your sampling? Mrs. Bescari's here and I'm here, who both bought the property. Just lessons learned from the last time where we had to have soil removed and testing every couple of feet to kind of make sure that doesn't happen, even if we pay personally or whatever, however we could work it out. Just to be completely reassured or...
It's just a matter of private property.
Yeah, we'd have to get a release to enter or have consultants enter your property, release a liability, just to, you know, it, you know...
I think that's a fair request.
That's, that's just like anything else. Everybody's legal. Legal.
Did you do soil samples for the first tank?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is there any way that we can get those results, or those results online, as far as before and after?
Online.
I have the air, I knew you sent me the air quality testing.
I thought I gave you the soil ones. I can send you the soil one, but I thought I sent you the...
No, I just have the air quality.
Yes.
I really read too much about this section of online. But how do you determine how deep the soil samples are? I've read that some people say three inches, other agencies say a foot. Where are you at?
It depends on the contamination. If you have high contamination in the first, say, three inches, they're going to have to come back and go deeper.
Okay.
It's usually, they dig them with a potting shovel. It's less than six inches. And that's, again, for the LSP, would do, recommend the same thing. They're, it's in the, in the topsoil. Lead is not something that, like I said before, doesn't move freely. It stays put.
Right. I know it kind of settles and resides down a little bit. We had to have like the first three inches of our topsoil.
Are there any other questions?
Did you get a better lawn to take a timer out?
Actually, they rolled it out. It was beautiful for a while.
Any other questions from the public? So this really has been informational for them to answer all of your questions and concerns. I think it's important that you pay attention when the, you know, the bid goes out and the bid documents and all of that. Pay attention to that and if there are some concerns, they come back and talk to us. Or do they talk to the building commissioner, board of health?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
Does the Auburn Water District have a site, a website?
Yes, it's a little archaic. It's not, it's on my honey-to-do list.
Instead of sending people individual emails with test results, they could be posted on your website that anybody could go look at them at any time?
Well, I have the list Mrs. Vile can give us.
Well, that really, and I, I like your idea because I only went around to some people. I felt bad, the people that I didn't get to.
I would like the information. I'm 150 feet away from the vast tank, you know, I mean, I'd like a little information.
And I'm about five feet away.
I guess that then also, if something, if God forbid, the test comes back and the ground is contaminated, how will people know? How will the surrounding people know? Will you, I mean, is there, I guess what I'm trying to look for is some sort of a plan if something goes wrong.
Outreach.
So, you know, what are people expected to do? Will they be expected to leave their homes? Will you be going door to door? Will you be calling people? I mean, I feel like that, that, there needs to be a plan there too, so that's...
I would do this here. If it exceeds, post exceeds...
Pre.
Pre.
Pre. I have the butters list here of which legally you guys, you know, so many feet all around. You know, it's, I think that's a fair...
You have reached out to the butters?
Yeah, I could just, you know, do that.
For the water.
Yep.
And it's on tape?
No, that's the fairest thing that, you know...
But somebody will be able to tell people whether they need to, what they need to do. That it's not just that there was contamination, but I have no idea. Like I'm, I'm a layperson. I have no idea if they'd have to leave for a while or if they can't be sub water or...
Between the building commissioner, board of health, and the water department.
Coordinate something and let people know.
I could, the board of health post the results.
Well, we've, you know, we've...
Start it as easy as possible. People get the information they want.
Weeks in advance of the actual, when we get a date for the demolition, we've notified the building department and we've notified Darlene, Darlene's department of it. So they're aware of it.
And you'll notify the butters as well?
We notified last time.
Or is there going to be something on your website? How are they going to know when the demo's going to start? How will they know when demo's going to start?
Oh, I can send it out again, but when you see the equipment moving up there and it's pretty obvious when it's going to start.
We don't get to see the equipment coming up the street.
I'm not going to be a little, you can, but I think what they're looking for is if, if you have a signed contract and they have a start date, say, June 1st, that's the notice to proceed with the contract. And they're not coming till, say, August 15th.
Yeah.
They're looking for maybe two-week notice ahead of time saying they're going to start in two weeks, weather permitting.
Okay, we can do that.
We can shut all the windows and doors and get the sound out of it.
Well, and again, that's the kids' bus stop too, and that was never moved and all the kids stood there every morning waiting for their bus. So that would be good for one of us to go over and say, hey, we're going to move the bus stop. I think that's important.
That's what I thought, that the group was going to move further down.
Yeah, they didn't. They didn't move. Nobody was told, so...
And most of the activity didn't start till after the kids were on, going.
Right, on the bus. And I understand that. But I just think it's important for them as well.
This is why it must start before school, even goes back in, right?
At this point, we're trying to project out four, five months, you know.
It's hard.
Yeah.
All right. Any further comments? Motion to close?
Do you have another comment? Okay. I'm making a motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There is no vote on that. It's just a, a close.
Yeah.
So they'll be notifying the butters a couple of weeks heads up. They'll also be coordinating with Department of Health and the building commissioner. So those are a couple of avenues for you as well if you have any questions. And hopefully you'll get something up on the website and try to keep this as transparent as possible, but, you know, try to stay in the loop. Okay?
And can, any of the people can call you anytime they want.
During the active demolition, I'm up there, I'm almost up there. I make sure they don't start before the time. 7:30, they've been, and when they do get a little zealous, we get on them. So they've been, 7:30 start time, you know.
I don't mind earlier.
Well, that was what was agreed to, so...
Yeah, I think 7:30, they hang out right next to my driveway and have coffee, so...
No, I've had them say, can we start early? I said, no. 7:30 was agreed to and I held them to that.
And there were some nights they stayed till a little bit, but it was so cold, they needed to get in.
I think the condition was 7:30 to 6:00.
The working hours in the contract anyway, right?
Yeah. One of the conditions in the rule was 7:30 to 6:00. So, and a lot of that time from time to one, it was dark, well, before the car.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Family LLC requesting modification, site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Avenue.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. Steven Madouse of Myer O'Connell here on behalf of Masada Family LLC. As the board is aware, we previously met with Michael Scott from Waterman Design. He's moved on from Waterman, but he's still available on this project. But this is the Asville Plan for Faith Ave, which has been executed as an 81X plan, so it's suitable for recording. But what we're looking for this evening, I've been told that everything that was required to be completed on the punch list, if you will, for the new roadway has been completed and that we're looking for a recommendation from the planning board to the board of selection, that the roadway be accepted and the old roadway be discontinued, so that we can complete the process. And I know the new way's been open for the public for some time, I think over a year. So that, if you, I wrote down some of the outstanding items that were, you may recall, there was signage with chevrons that was installed, a crosswalk, like, you know, working with Mr. Coyle.
Yeah, the crosswalk with the blinking light. And that's all operational.
That was the last thing on the list, was the crosswalk.
Yeah. It's still a terrible location, I got to tell you. I came around that corner myself, going 20 miles an hour, and there was a kid running across the street. It's terrible, but, because the site distance just isn't there. But they, they did do what we requested that they do and so...
It's great cover for the floor. It's a good cover for the floor.
Right.
And the certificate of compliance was issued by the conservation commission.
Saw that.
And recorded. So, and as you know, there's, this was like a land use exam, all that's going on on this plan. There's easements to be conveyed and I've been working with town council and will make certain all of that. I'm sure town council makes certain as well, but those easements are executed so that the whole purpose of the special act was to make this kind of a seamless transaction, that there wouldn't be a long delay between the acceptance of the new and the discontinuance of the old and the conveyance of the easement interest that the town requires for drainage. So all those documents have been drafted and reviewed by town council. Mr. Henning, so if, as I say, I was, because Michael Scott is not available, I was kind of threw the straw to come in and maybe this was the chip in, I hope, to finally advance the project towards what everybody intended.
Okay. Adam?
Yeah, everything seems to be in place. We worked with Coyle last week and he said everything looked good. So we're waiting for this to come.
So we need to make the recommendation to the board of selection to accept the roadway?
We make the recommendation as well. We make the recommendation as well. I agree with that.
I think he recommends to us that it's acceptable. We recommend to the board of selection.
The board of selection. Yeah. No, yeah, absolutely. Clarification.
Sorry. This is also continued as a public here, before I start, as a modification to site plan approval. So I think we need some kind of site plan approval. It's, the project is, for all intents and purposes, done.
So we'll need a motion for that? And then we'll need a motion to make a recommendation to, yeah.
I think the completion of the transaction will lead you to site plan approval.
All right.
Yeah. Because then he'll have the land area. So we'll come...
Hold on, hold on, site plan, just recommend, what's like, and...
Okay.
The approval, or the acceptance of the roadway.
So someone make a recommendation that we accept the roadway?
I'll make that recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's a motion.
Could you also recommend the discontinuance of the...
Has that been accepted, Adam? Have we gotten paid? Have they worked that, finally worked that deal with the state?
That's also with the state, work with town council, at this point, it's just, it works. It's not a worst like, has the authority at this point to make the...
All right. So we make a recommendation to discontinue the 5th Avenue...
As a public road.
As a public roadway to the select board, so...
I'll make that recommendation. As stated.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's been a long slog.
It has. I'm trying to think of how many years. I'll see it with Mr. Coyle.
I've been, I've been six, seven years. It's been that whole time.
Six, seven, eight.
Yeah. Before that.
Yeah. I wasn't involved in the site plan.
Maybe, maybe even closer to 10.
10, yeah.
But I, I do think it's a win-win, you know? And we appreciated the town voting to petition for the special legislation, but, you know, you get the new roadway with drainage that didn't exist and...
It absolutely makes sense.
Well, it'll eliminate water going on to the turnpike entrance on and off.
Less to park, yeah. A lot less to park.
Yeah, a lot less to maintain, yeah.
Plus, that other road is so dangerous.
He gets the campus, so...
All right.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right. So, what's next? Site plan modification, Patrick?
Yeah.
Site plan modification, Patrick, last at one eighty-nine Washington Street. Anybody? Yeah, there he is.
We can't shut that door, right?
But they did.
Oh, yeah, they did it.
Well, we could open this one now.
I just have my own questions.
Sure.
I have the impression that the group is going to do a walk through of the property on Washington Street, and go to Wetlands last Saturday, and we have a meeting on it today. And that's why I'm here. I'm a butter of the Wetlands that's between the Nass Pike and Tuck Farm Road.
That's the rezoning, that's down there.
That's Conservation.
Conservation Commission.
This is not Conservation Commission?
No, Planning.
Wednesday night. I'm not sure if it's this Wednesday.
It's not this Wednesday. I think it's.
Next Wednesday?
I think it's, I think it was last Wednesday. So, I don't know if they met last Wednesday or it's next month.
Do you want to write your information down, and I will call you tomorrow and let you know?
Okay. All right, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, Patrick McPerry. How's everybody this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. So the, as you know, we're progressing along on the Mazda project, and the Patricks asked us to look into heating the sidewalks along the front of the building and the service drop-off and some of the customer area for, you know, winter months and liability and all that stuff. And in doing that, we took a look at the striping. This is the plan that the board last approved in August. Remember when we went from the multiple tiers to the two-tiered approach? We had two handicap spots here at the front of the showroom, and then we had three along the row that faces Route twenty. And then, you know, so then we'd have to, if we're going to heat this, we'd be heating over there, and some over here, and some over there. And so we looked at kind of reconfiguring to consolidate. So we're requesting a modification to move all of the handicap spaces, oh, I forgot to highlight one, all of the handicap spaces to the front of the showroom, right there at the front of the door.
That makes so much more sense.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
The second part of the request for the modification is the approved site plan showed the pylon sign here at the top of our driveway, which is where Mazda wanted it, but they've finally realized that it's not very visible from Route twenty way back here. So what we'd like to do is lose one spot at the front of the building and make an island and drop the sign kind of in the middle of the front.
Makes sense, too.
So we're hoping that you would support these two, what we see as minor modifications.
Nick?
I'm good.
Ron?
Good.
John?
My other question is, by losing the one parking space, do we still have enough parking spaces to meet code?
Oh, yeah, we need one thirty-six, we have three thirty-four.
Some of those are inventory, though, right?
Yeah, everything up top is inventory, and along the street, and some of these are inventory, and then the remainder are customer and service. And that's still not enough. They're still looking for another spot in town to store more cars. Same with Volvo's way.
They have both, right?
What's that?
Patrick has both Volvo and the.
Yeah, we're moving Volvo, remember, we're moving Volvo from Worcester to five nineteen Washington. We're hoping to get that started in the next three to four weeks. We started to build the retaining wall out back, and then everything grows up on us.
Still around a mile.
Auto three miles?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So we need a motion to approve the minor modification?
Yeah, and that it is a minor modification.
That it is a minor modification.
I'll make a motion that it's a minor modification.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good one.
Thank you very much.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minor modification.
A motion to accept, yes, thank you.
I didn't give you a stamp.
All those in favor? Thanks for doing my job, Nick.
I could add an assist on that one.
I like the assist, thank you.
You gotta be in one.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Has the project done West Tech Drive, come before the board yet?
West Tech, yes.
Would you ask company?
Yeah.
Because I saw dig safe marks all down twenty and then up West Tech, and that's where our sewer's going, so.
They're supposed to be starting.
I need to get a little coordination going.
Yeah, sounds it.
All right.
Have a good one.
Thank you very much, I'm ready.
All right, so the table of uses and descriptions, section three point two and three point three point three?
Yes.
Let me see, I haven't any, I don't think I have any.
Can you only change the ones in red, correct? Yellow?
Those are the new items.
New items. Yeah, there's no clarification really, right?
The yellow, we just, we highlighted yellow, we're still tweaking line to work with animal control officer.
additions and clarifications.
Just make sure she's good with it.
Yeah, I thought those all made sense. Anybody else have any comments on those? Three point two, point one, two, three point?
Adam, that's the one with the animal, right?
No.
Oh, no, that's the.
No. It's the article.
Yeah, we better explain in the charter.
Yep.
Yeah, the chart and the descriptions will be paired up as an article. They complement each other. It's mainly adding a lot of new uses.
Yep.
Getting rid of some dated.
Dated language and uses, yeah.
We do.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was, was good, cleaned it up.
A lot.
A lot, yes, yeah.
That's a big effort, and helps that some bylaw committee also reviewed all that over a couple of meetings, and added that comment.
Really get into the indoor agriculture. You really get into the indoor agriculture.
Yeah.
I wonder what that's all about.
I wonder what that's all about, yeah. Something to do with marijuana, maybe?
Nope. That's not allowed.
I know. All right. So does anybody have any comments on three point two and three point three? Okay. So then we're onto the dimensional regulation, section five point four. There is that one.
So we're looking to increase the height.
Increase the height of the buildings?
In a couple areas, fifty feet. Spoke to the fire chief, he was good with the IP. It would actually be good to allow buildings up to eight stories, which is a hundred feet, eighty-five feet, two hundred feet, depending on, I generally think it's ten feet a story or fourteen.
Just in those areas, right?
I don't have a problem with higher. I don't know how Tommy would feel.
Yeah, highway, this is GIINIP.
I think they bring in some of the, hopefully, mixed use. You're gonna have to go higher than five stories.
The mixed use, the biotech, though.
Computers.
Right, and you said up to eight stories.
If I, we go up to eight stories.
Eight stories, okay.
And what is this section in?
It's the dimensional regulation.
And it's in the chart.
So I'm, I'm open to.
They have a ladder truck, so now, it's a huge ladder truck.
So fifty feet is how many stories?
It used to be thirty-two height. Wasn't it thirty-two feet in ease before?
Thirty, currently it's thirty-five. Twenty-five to thirty-five, depending on the district. Twenty-five only on highway business.
So it's gonna go to five stories of fifty feet?
Fifty feet currently, or I'm, so I'm open to higher.
But the fire chief is open to eighty, so we can do an eight story. No?
I just feel like we don't have anybody looking for eight stories in those districts. It's kind of like, why not just wait until we see what happens, and then get applicants that are, you know.
But if you leave it open, then, you know, then we won't have to go back and revisit this.
It's general industry, right? GI.
Yeah.
So if somebody was down at Sword Street and ripped out a building and wanted to put up an eight-story building, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
They're gonna butt enable it most likely.
Or if something happens in Irving Square, say, somebody buys up the town pizza place and tears it down, puts up an eight-story building, first two floors are commercial, meaning shops and stuff, and the next six floors are apartments. Well, why would I say no?
Well, could you just do that with special permit, though?
It has to be a variance.
Okay.
And variances are?
They're not supposed to be easy to get.
Right.
Doesn't mean they aren't, but.
Right. And if they have the capability, the fire department has the capability for an eight-story building?
They do, Adam?
The fire chief said you'd be okay going up eight stories.
No, because we don't want it to keep going up, and then we need another ladder truck or something like that.
And we need variances.
Well, it would only be in these districts. They want it to be, like, in Irving Square.
Right, yeah.
But still need that truck if it got to a certain height.
The industrial, mainly the industrial park.
But a five-story building with two, you know, and then three.
That's fine, true.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not gonna do it in the, you know, the overly district down in the town center. You wouldn't want that, I don't think, but.
Why, why, medical offices, five stories.
Yeah, two and five, yeah, yeah.
So my only concern would be town being, for a start, at fifty or thirty. But you want, somebody want to amend it on the floor.
I am not, I'm not digging on the floor to be clear, but, no, I think that, I mean.
I'd split the difference and start with sixty-five.
It would be too much higher than any other town ever.
I think that would be my thing, is I would rather, I don't want to become the prime candidate for eight-story buildings. But there aren't other towns that have that high, that are in the area that are like that.
Around sixty.
Right.
Is the average.
That's why I wouldn't feel comfortable going all the way up to eighty, or a hundred, I mean. So I'm fine with.
I wouldn't go to a hundred, but I'd say sixty-five is a good place.
That was what you said, the fire chief was okay going up to a hundred.
Stories, yeah.
Eighty.
Eighty.
Eighty stories?
Eighty feet.
You said it's up to eight stories.
Yeah, eighty feet.
So, yeah, I can change it up to sixty-five and see how that plays out. We have a zoning bylaw committee meeting next week, so.
Monday, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we recommend, we agree, we recommend sixty-five feet. Everybody good with that? Okay, recommending sixty-five feet. Any other comments on the dimensional regulation, section five point four? All right, authority and purpose, section one.
Just kind of housekeeping, just changing some old data, land use language, adding some more modern language. This was picked up by the zoning diagnostic that we had done last year by CMR PC. And it's also would correct a numbering error in the site by law.
That's a total flip of wordage. That's a total flip of wordage.
Yeah.
Which is that?
Just this one right here. What it used to say, to avoid undue concentration.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, I read that. Yeah, encouragement, I think people have low income levels and those things, right?
Which is, which actually happened, I don't believe it's happening.
Yep. All right, the duplicate bylaws.
So these bylaws, these were updated in two thousand fifteen in the general bylaws. Current bylaws and the zoning bylaws will update older and give them, basically, it's housekeeping.
Okay. And then the animal section, I think this one's gonna take a little bit over.
That, we finished that draft Thursday morning, so a couple hours before I sent it to you. I met with animal control officer Amy Contas and Bill Coyle. We spent several days working on it. Caleb Moody also, building commissioner. But currently, you're not supposed to have more than four animals per lot, any time, includes domestic animals, cats, dogs, as well as livestock, chickens.
No, Adam, that's in the areas as we spoke of, under five acres.
That's all the town right now. Currently, it's all of town. No more than four animals per zoning.
Currently?
Currently.
In any zoning district?
Yep.
So you mean when I had animals, I wasn't supposed to have more than four pigs?
Correct.
No, but remember, we said state law overrides town law in that case?
In that case, yes. You have a lot of level land, and you could be considered a farm.
Same with the Big Five up on Prospect Street, right? We didn't want four animals.
This proposed bylaw would, if you want to allow people to have animals, more than four animals, if they fit, they meet certain requirements. You're gonna have chickens, you need to have so much land. You're gonna have a goat, five goats, you need so much land. You have to, there are certain setbacks, certain requirements. You're gonna have more than four dogs, that falls under the color requirements, which is in zoning, it's an issue. But if you want five cats, you can't currently have five cats. It's not allow somebody to have five cats. Everything would be inspected by control of water health. It's just, it's allowing people formerly to have.
I didn't regulate cats. Dogs are licensed.
Yeah, good luck with that.
They can regulate cats.
Yeah. I think one of the things that frightens me about this, or that concerns me about this, is that, you know, we're kind of turning the corner on trying to become, have our food sources closer and become, you know, more sustainable locally, and are we eliminating the ability for people to, you know, raise chickens or pigs or cows organically and, you know, free range and this kind of a thing? And so thereby, you know, kind of squelching this kind of movement to have in your food source locally. You know, that's really, I mean.
Maybe they're trying to avoid somebody with a quarter acre lot having ten pigs.
Well, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes, yeah.
That's where it's good, in the RA, RB.
Less than five acres, more than five acres, you know, that kind of thing.
The intent is to let people have chickens for one, because most places you can't buy fewer than six. You have to buy six at a time.
Six at a time, yes.
And we said no roosters.
No roosters, that was good, yeah.
No roosters, less than five. They're trying to give people the opportunity to have these animals.
No roosters, less than five chickens? No roosters for less than five chickens?
No, no roosters at all.
Less than five acres.
No roosters, yeah, on less than five acres at all. And then on, and dogs and cats, you know, dogs, there should be some kind of a regulation where, when you get those, certain dogs bay and howl all night or bark incessantly.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some kind of protection for that, because in the past, it's been like.
It says a public nuisance, but I don't think that goes far enough.
It's a nuisance, but we can't do anything.
It doesn't go far enough. When you, when you say a public nuisance, it should, there should be some examples of what a public nuisance, maybe.
So it's not a gray area and someone, because those are some of the main things, the barking, incessant.
Should be a fine implemented for that.
A lot of these things will fall, those types of things will fall under the regulations that water health and animal control would have.
Okay.
The zoning is just, well, basically allowing people to have these animals in certain situations.
They do have a barking nuisance thing, not to interrupt, but there is something that's recorded with that.
So again, anything over fi, when you're over five acres, you aren't subject to those laws.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense, because we don't want to eliminate, you know.
Like you said, we, even, you know, if this, this was, this is kind of allowing, but also regulating it a little bit, so it protects a few things on the under five acres, which is good. But the allowance is good because a lot of people want to have that and probably couldn't in the past. Six chickens shouldn't be a problem for the most by for anybody, okay? Unless someone who just never cleans it, and even that, it would take a while to get that. But to regulate further, I'm talking about, not just because I do it, but farming or anything like that, there's just too much regulation and everything. It's, you know, nobody that's got a farm's gonna want to call up the Board of Health or the Board of Appeals and say, oh, I'm getting seven, can I get seven pigs next week? Because I wouldn't be doing it. But I also know that state law overrides, overrides town law, and you're allowed to basically do what you want, under reg.
Yeah. If you're farming and it's more than five acres, it's a different category. This is, this is a test of the one acre lot to half acre lot that wants to have six chickens or wants to have.
And not negatively impact the neighbors. I mean, in a town where, let's be honest, we're on top of each other as it is. It's kind of like, some of these things are a necessity, because, you know, I may love chickens, but my neighbor may not, period. You know, and I think that is kind of like, some of this is built in here to be like a respectful neighbor.
Chickens don't make a lot of noise. It's the roosters that make the noise.
But what did you say about five goats?
Somebody wants to have five goats, they can have five goats.
In, in RA?
They have to have a special piece of property in RA to, because most RA lots are pretty small.
They're usually ten thousand square feet. B is twenty roughly, and then C is sixty, and then R is.
So we don't have to ever worry about owning any of ours, because they only got a third of an acre, so I'm good. I don't have to worry about that, even though we weren't considering chickens.
So, but this is just, again, this is not to get, formally allow the animals and have some kind of control, don't want to say control, but have, look out for the neighbors, make sure they're not nuisance, make sure you don't have chickens wandering down the hall. Don't think anybody wants that.
So they, you know, the ones, the one that I did have a question on, there's a buffer area of not less than ten feet, either in its natural state or landscape, maintained between property line and fencing, corals, so vice versa. Then it says no shelters or structures used in the conjunction shall be within twenty.
Twenty feet.
Of the property line. Why aren't they both ten feet?
If you're in an RA district and you got a, if you're ten feet, twenty, ten feet of the property, and you got the other thing twenty feet, you could be right next to the house.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I've got a third of it, I can't have anything. I can't have bee hives, I can't, you know, can't do any of it. So.
What was the reason?
One's twenty and one's ten. What's the, you know?
What was the reason, why so much regulation on hives? I don't have any, but I know people in Worcester that, at work, that have had them, and they're in small lots in Worcester. And they got a hive, and they're just infatuated with how much honey they get out of them.
You think you would be encouraging beekeeping, considering the state of bees?
That the bees and the problems they have.
It's probably in a book, that, you know, the overregulation is just crazy.
I know somebody actually sectioned up part of his house and the beehives are inside.
I didn't think you were gonna do it.
Not me.
Anyway, I think, you know, it's all good for clarification, but I think, you know.
The bee hives are just kind of, we're.
I know, we're trying to be respectful, and you can't depend on everybody to be respectful of their neighbors.
You're gonna have a long night at town meeting, yeah.
So, I mean, you got the, you got the people who buy, you know, buy up a piece of land but next to a pig farm that's been there for a hundred years, and next thing you know, they're complaining about the smell and everything else. Well, then why did you buy the land, you know?
Right next to the mangrove.
Right, yeah, yeah. The noise, whatever it is.
The highway on my backyard.
Free range.
Been there for fifty years.
You're not being Peter friendly, and I'm not allowed to say pets anymore. They have to be companions.
Like the manhole covers?
Does anybody have any other comments on that?
People hole covers?
That, this will be on the agenda for zoning bylaw committee for their.
Or manholes, any of them.
Because they will tear it apart. Slightly at their meeting, they tend to be communitized group, which is not a.